Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Virginia City Council Chambers. This is a regularly scheduled city council meeting. I call this meeting to order. Today's date is Tuesday, October 14, 2025. Time is 5:30 PM. Jenny, would you please take the roll call?
Yes, Mayor. Counselor Johnson?
Here.
Counselor Motley?
Here.
Counselor Paulson?
Present.
Counselor Beyondich?
Present.
Counselor Bachschneider?
Here.
Counselor Frehleb?
Here.
Mayor Cuffey?
Present. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, welcome, everybody, to the City Council Chambers. We have an extensive packet to go through this evening, so please have patience as we move forward with this packet of information. We'll move to item four on the agenda, which is the public forum. This is the opportunity for anybody from the general public who's in the audience today would like to speak. If you would please come forward and turn the light on and please state your name for the record and welcome to the city council meeting.
Greg Lency. We're here because of the proposed property tax increase, and I invited all these people here tonight. In 2024, the certified property tax levy was 21.46%. That increase was more than double any previous tax increase in recent history. Homeowners, in many cases, experienced $2,000 to $4,000 increase in property taxes in one year. Mountain Iron's tax, based on the estimated market value, is 1.12%. Virginia is at 2.09%, so we're almost double. Virginia ranks the highest taxed city in the state out of 855 cities, where the second highest taxed in the entire seven-county Arrowhead region of northeastern Minnesota. Currently, many homeowners' annual property taxes are well above $10,000 a year. The 2026 proposed levy increase is 22.75%. It's unacceptable. It's not 20%, which was stated by the city in the newspaper. No one has any faith that the levy will come down. That's why we're here. We came early to discuss this with you, so we're not waiting until December. The faith and the hope of that levy coming down is gone. St. Louis County set a levy of 12.5% preliminary. Rock Ridge is at 21% on top of Virginia's. Virginia's portion of that tax statement is 60%, so we can control our taxes. We can't say that we can't control it. We own 60% of our tax, so it can be controlled through spending cuts, not hiring people. I just want to go through some recent losses, and these are just the huge ones. From 2018 to 2023, the Virginia Public Utilities reported $28.1 million loss in six-year period. The ITMEC, it's been open for four years and three months. The operating costs alone by the end of this year will be $8 million to the citizens of Virginia. By the end of next year, it'll be $10 million. That's the cost of operating that building. So recent purchases: two snowplows, service truck, garbage truck, grapple bucket, mulching head, lawnmower, lawnmower, ladder truck, ambulance, two beverage carts, greater lease, sewer camera. That adds up, and I'm sure I missed a lot. That's over $4.5 million worth of our money that got spent through this council. So in three years, the city's not showing taxpayers any restraint in spending or reduction of staff or the not purchasing equipment. They've hired every vacancy. They created jobs. So tonight, we just wanted to show that I'm not the only one that's been coming here, and Earl, and being concerned about our property taxes. So there's a lot of people that are backing the members of this council that are trying really hard to cut taxes, reduce spending, and lower our tax bill. It's not just me. This is a really, really vast representation of the city of Virginia. Thank you.
Before we go to Counselor Motley, we did set the levy, preliminary levy really high. That's true. We've had budget meetings since then. We're still chipping away at it. We'll have to have a final levy to the legislation by the end of this year, but we're down to about 14.7%. We're still working on getting that reduced even further. So that being said, I'll move over to Counselor Motley. Counselor Motley?
I appreciate everybody coming here. We need to have the taxpayers more present with what's happening in this city, because I think some things that are happening may not have happened if we had more taxpayers paying attention long before today, or last year, or the year before, whatever. We need pressure. There are people on this council that agree with what Greg Lency just said, but it's not the majority, per se. And I am one of the few on this council that thinks that this city can't continue the way it's always been, because it can't continue the way it's always been. Things are changing. Things are unaffordable, in my opinion, in their current form and the way the city's always done things. And if things don't change around here in the way things have always been, I don't know how you stop the trajectory of it just continuing to rise. But I am the minority on that thought process. But there are people trying, but we need you to come here. You need to pressure us. Your voices need to be heard, and you have to be strong, because there are things happening. And I know business owners don't want to get involved, per se, for things, but you need to be heard. We need to hear from you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Motley. Any other resident who would like to speak before the council, welcome to come forward. I think Greg Lency spoke for all of you and many of us on the council as well. But you're welcome to come up and address the council if you like. Once again, the preliminary levy was set high at 22.75%. The operating levy at one point was at 20, then the additional Vito levy, so moving forward, so the debt levy is at 22.75. We've reduced that down to 14.7 something in that regard. We've continued to move down even farther. 14.7 is not acceptable, obviously, to the -- I don't think the entire council is appreciative of the concerns that you all have here today, and we're going to work hard to move that way down as long as we can get it. If we have to take the necessary steps in which to make some significant financial adjustments, we're willing to do so, and we will do so. I encourage you all to come here, pay attention to our budget meetings we have. We have another one next Tuesday. What time was that? At 7:30 in the morning to look at these items even further. We're not adding new positions. We have been filling some of the positions that are already budgeted for: police, fire, and public works. Those are the ones we have been filling. On the agenda tonight, there are some positions where they've been vacated through retirements from other sources, and we're looking at maybe replacing those as well. They are within the budget. They're not new positions. So if it comes down to the point where we have to make some adjustments, adjustment's going to be made in two areas. One is personnel, and the other is capital equipment purchases. And if we look at our budget, about 81% right in that area, pretty close, and Megan can get that information specifically, that percentage, but approximately 81% of our entire budget is salary and benefits for employees. So that being said, additional adjustments will have to be made to the budget moving forward. We'll continue to do that. So please be patient with us as we do that, but we welcome your input, any ideas or questions you have. You can email any of us. I've received a number of emails over the course of the last couple of weeks with respect to that. They've been moved to staff. They're all discussed at the budget meetings as well. So we're continuing to work to bring it down. 14.7% is not acceptable to me either, so we're just going to move it down as far as we can. And once we get to the point where we feel as an elected body that this is a palatable levy, that's when the big cuts have to be made. So we'll see how that works, but we are working hard to move that down. So from 22.75%, Mr. Lency, we're down to 14.7 now, and moving down further. This is about a process that has been implemented over the course of the last -- since I've been here, and the levy has been set higher. And up until last year, we've had levies anywhere from 0% all the way up to 10%, and averaged over that one period of time was about 5.2%. So the last few years, the levy was increased even a little bit more. I think last year was, what, 8%? So we will get there. And any questions that you might have, you're welcome to, sir. Please come forward. And thank you. Please state your name for the record and welcome to the council meeting, sir.
Good evening, everyone. My name is John Scooby. I've been a resident of Virginia since 1989, except for about five years when I was in Pittsburgh. I live in Fairview Edition. I was visited a couple of weeks ago by Mr. Lency, and it was an eye-opening visit. I'm assuming what he told me was all accurate. And after we talked for about an hour and a half, two hours, I was kind of upset. I was scared. I was scared for the city of Virginia. Mayor Cuffey, Counselor Motley, I appreciate your efforts in wanting to decrease the budget, but Mayor Cuffey, chipping away at the budget, it's not going to work. You have to take more in the chipper. The whole mindset of budget increasing every year has to be changed. We've got to get to the point where the budget levels off and starts going down. We have to start using the mindset of the private sector, where if they can decrease the cost of their product, they go out of business. I'm not saying, you know, start cutting labor's benefits and salaries, all that. They deserve it. But when you have an opening or when you have a vacancy, we have to think long and hard about filling that vacancy. We have to use the value of our employees to be able to get by without filling that vacancy. If they're worth that much, if they're worth the salary we're paying them, the benefits we're paying them, we should be able to get by with less people. We have to have that mindset. When our department heads come for an increase in their budget, we have to press them. We have to have them do the hard work and see how they can find somewhere else in the budget to cut, or else just forget about the idea that they want to spend extra money. Right now, it doesn't seem to me that we're doing that. And I think, you know, from what Mr. Lency told me about how much debt we're in, what our debt rating is and everything, our city defaulting wouldn't be good for anyone. It wouldn't be good for the property holder. It'd be terrible for the city, and it'd be catastrophe for our workforce. Everyone's got to start understanding that. I think we're at a kind of a point where it's going to be important to start changing the way we think, changing the way we operate, and getting everyone on board to buy in. You know, maybe, I read an article about getting a new grader. Maybe fixing that grader would have been the answer if we would have pressed the department head. Maybe using a different piece of equipment other than a grader to get by. But that's the kind of thing that we have to start asking about every decision that involves increasing the amount of money we want to spend or borrow. 25 years ago, when we moved back from Pittsburgh, Virginia was the place to live. My wife and I, we wanted to live in Virginia. We couldn't find a house, so we ended up building a new house in Fairview Edition. We were serial number one. A lot of lots are sold before us, but we were the first house built. And I knew the taxes would be higher there, and I understand modest increase in taxes. I understand that. But the city has to do their part also. They can't just be depending on the property owner to take the brunt of it. I don't think our, according to Greg, I don't think our property tax base is big enough to sustain the tax load that we require on them. It's going to fail. I wasn't prepared to talk, but I had to get up and sit.
Mr. Scooby, thank you, Mr. Scooby, for coming in. Maybe it was a poor choice of words, and my part to say we're chipping away. It's more than that. We have to make some significant reductions, and I concur with the comments that you made.
Thank you.
Well, this is the public forum. So you're welcome to any topic you have during the courses on item number four on the agenda. Please state your name for the record. Thank you, and welcome to the city council meeting.
My name is Teresa Apple. I'm with the Lawrence and Chamber of Commerce. Thank you, everybody, mayor, council. I am here tonight because I want to thank the city for hosting us at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center on October 3 for our gala. It was a lovely evening, and I want to thank the city for the investment into that event center. We love hosting events there. It is an incredible asset to the city. I think that is well evidenced right now that we are going to be hosting the Pan Continental Curling Championship there starting on Sunday. So I hope you all can make it out there, and sure that Brian is probably going to be touching on that. But the economic value that that will be bringing into our communities is undeniable, and I understand everybody's concerns. I'm not denying that. So please understand, I'm not denying that in any way, because I appreciate that you all are here. I love the input, and please know that we host a meet and greet with the candidates on voting years, so, well, when there are a lot of participants in voting years. So we invite all the candidates that are running in the Quad Cities areas to come out, and we want you to engage, because we want active participants in our electoral process. So we want smart, engaged voters. So thank you for being here tonight. So that is not, we're not dismissing that whatsoever, but the economic value to what that does for the region is undeniable. So we also want to invite you to Breakfast Connections. That's going to be coming up on November 12 at Virginia Community Foundation and North State Baker Virginia on Chestnut at that office. So that's November 12, but even closer to our timeline than that is October 22. Business Happy Hour is going to be at Ascencia in Virginia here. So we do those events every month, and this month, they are right here in Virginia. So that's what I've got. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Teresa, and I appreciate the accolades to the event staff. It does serve you a purpose, so we appreciate that very much. Anyone else I'd like to speak before we move on to the next item on the agenda? Okay, thank you. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I just want to say thank you to everyone that's here this evening. This has been a really challenge. I think it's been a challenge for all of us to go through and just see how much it takes to run the city and to try and be mindful going forward. And when we went through, you know, the unfortunate situation we ran into regarding the strike, and I don't know if that was three years ago, almost, two years ago, we had gone line by line, and it really, I mean, we took several meetings, several, I don't even want to know how many countless hours we spent going line by line and saying, do we really need this? I mean, and it wasn't necessarily with department heads. It was just talking together. Do we need this? Can we pare this down? How low can we get this to go? And so I feel like we are coming up on that exercise again and going line by line, what can we pare down? How can we do this? But I do agree with Mr. Scooby that it can't always be chipping away. There needs to be a better solution in our long-term financial planning, in our long-term debt management. And so we have brought a financial consultant on board, Baker Tilly, that is going to be assisting Virginia with some of that management and also looking at our bond rating, because I think that our bond rating is something that, to me, is very concerning, because that dictates how low of an interest rate we can get when we go out for a bond. And right now, our bond rating, excuse me, our bond interest rates have been a little higher because, due to our bond rating. And I think just to address spending and planning, I think the main thing that we really need to do is put money aside for purchases instead of always going out and bonding for those purchases. So every time we say, okay, a bond is going to drop off, okay, well, now we can go bond for another $4 million or $5 million, and it just keeps that cycle going. And I feel like what we need to do is we need to look at the overall picture and how can we get ourselves more financially secure. And one tool that this council will be using is the consultancy of Baker Tilly, and I hope that they come forward with some really good recommendations and suggestions, because we will be going line by line as an exercise, I'm sure we will, as a body on the budget. But, you know, cut, 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 there's only so much, and we still have to, you still have to plan, you know, your five-year, 10-year outlook. You have to plan properly in order to be able to afford even those payments, even if some bond payment drops off. It's, you know, it's almost like you rack up a bill on a credit card, you max it out, and then you just go to the next credit card to pay that one off. So it's a cycle, and I see the cycle happening, and it is concerning to me. So I really am looking forward to getting the information from Baker Tilly, but I know our staff is working to pare that down. And when we set the preliminary levy, that was just a starting point to know where we had to go down. So I appreciate all of you being here, and just know that we will continue to work for you, the taxpayers who pay everything, the city staff, and pay for the services that the city provides. And the last thing I wanted to ask is, Mr. Lency, if you would happen to have a copy of that, if you could provide that in an email or what you just read tonight. I tried to write down some of the statistics and the debt over time, but that would be helpful if you would mind providing that. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And I invite a group or an individual to come to my office any time. My telephone number is on the website. It's everywhere. It's my personal phone. The city doesn't issue me a cell phone. You call me anytime. I'll come to your house. I'll come to your group. You can come to my office and have any question. I'm more than happy to answer for you. If I don't have the answer, I'll certainly get them for you. And so we're an open book here with respect to those things. And I don't want to belabor the thing about the bond debt and the levy and how we're working with the bonds, but a lot of our bond debt is, has to be carried, even though it's being paid by some other entity. And so that is something to be discussed, and we'll do so, and I'll discuss it with you on a one-to-one basis versus as a group, if you like, and so at your convenience. So you can certainly reach out to me any time. Okay, is there anyone else I'd like to speak before we move on to the next item on the agenda? Thank you. Brian Silver, our Park and Rec Director, is here to give us some information in the public forum.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if I'm a private citizen or Park and Rec Director, but I wanted to take this opportunity, while we had a full house, to talk about what I was going to talk about during department head reports, which is an exciting event that we have coming up at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center, starting this Sunday, which is the Pan Continental Curling Championships. This event is, conservative estimates are showing before the event that it should generate approximately $1.5 million of direct spending in our communities in the next 10 days. That is $1.5 million coming from outside the area to our local businesses that we would not be receiving if we did not have an outstanding curling facility in our neighboring city of Evolith or a great venue such as the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. So I want to thank not only the council, but all of the citizens that voted overwhelmingly in support of building the Iron Trail Motors Event Center here about seven years ago, this coming November, I believe, was that vote. Mr. Lency, I thank you for pointing out the $10 million as of next year that the event center will have spent. Would just also like you to factor into those numbers how much money the city would have spent on the Miners Memorial Building and what type of an impact that building was having on our community, because the last 10 years of operation of that building, it averaged spending $1.5 million a year, and it brought in about $200,000 a year. So please, moving forward in your calculations, when you're showing what a debt that building is, please consider what it replaced and the economic impact that it replaced. But this Saturday, well, sorry, this Sunday, we will have our grand opening celebration for the Pan Continental Curling Championships. Tickets, you do need a ticket for the event. They are free. You can get them on the Iron Trail Motors Event Center website. Tickets for the entire event are super affordable, anywhere from $5 to $20, depending on the session that you're going to. Encourage everybody to come out to the event. On Sunday, we will have 20 different countries represented. So all of the countries that are coming to the championships will be here in-house on Sunday. There is a reception and a meet and greet immediately following. We have some great speakers, so I hope everybody will come out to that event. Thank you, Mayor. I hope I haven't exceeded my five minutes by too much.
Thank you, Mr. Silver. We look forward to additional report from you at the end of this council meeting, so thank you. Before we move on to the next item on the agenda, Counselor Beyondich.
Thank you. Just, this is really quick. As the council, we did not have a finance committee. So what we have created is more of an open meeting, a budget meeting, and the public has always been invited to participate and be part of that budget meeting, and it happens once a month before the second committee of the whole or the first. Second committee of the whole at 7:30 in the morning. The public is totally welcome to come and participate, hear what we're talking about with finances. Nothing is behind closed doors. We created that especially for the public to be informed on what is happening with our city finances. So please attend if you're able to. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Beyondich. Okay, let's move on to Counsel Frehleb.
Thank you for the time, Mayor.
You're so. My pleasure.
Mr. Lency, you and I have known each other longer than anybody in this town, I think, and I appreciate you bringing all these people tonight to express their opinions. It is a little bit distressing for me for alluding to that we don't share the same mindset as you do when we're making decisions at this table, because we do, in fact, because I'm a lifeline resident of Virginia. I live in a 120-year-old house on Third Street and on a 25-foot lot, so obviously, I'm not taxed as dramatically as, like, John is up in Fairview Edition or whatever. But, you know, there's things that have come down the pike in the city, too, that, like, I didn't anticipate having to spend an additional $8,000 for the Third Street improvement in front of my house. I didn't expect to invest $40,000 some odd thousand dollars in steam conversion for the two houses that I owned at the time. So I'm impacted as well as everybody else in this community is. So I'm not going to be making decisions without contemplating significantly and seriously what I need to do on behalf of all of us, including myself. So I just want you to know that, that I'm not here just making decisions willy-nilly to appease people like Ryan Silver or Jim Rossford or anybody else. I do need to take their considerations into my consideration, but I am making decisions that I think are in the best interests of all of us in this room right now. And so it is a little distressing when people come up and allude that that may not be the case, because I guarantee you that it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Frehleb. Okay, anything else before we move on to the next item on the agenda? Okay, thank you. on the agenda? Okay, thank you. Move to item five on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. The following items will be enacted by one motion unless a councillor or citizen of the City of Virginia requests that the items be considered separately. Item 5.1 is the approval and corrections of the minutes for September 23, 2025 council meeting and the September 23, 2025 public hearing. Item 5.2 is the adoption of Finance Resolution Number 25-019, the schedule of bills. Item 5.3 is approve pay estimate number five for 14th, 20th Southern Drive and Chestnut Street projects to KGM contractors in the amount of $1,052,768. Item 5.4 is approve pay estimate number five for the 2024 Alley Improvement Project to Utility Systems of America in the amount of $1,053,425.88. And finally, item 5.5, approve the on-sale and Sunday liquor license for the Sugar Shack LLC, doing business as the Sugar Shack. These are the consent agenda items for the council today. Looking for council action.
I will move the consent agenda.
Council Johnson moves to approve the consent agenda. Is there support? Support by Council Freely. Further discussion, Council Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. I need to pull item 5.2 for an abstention.
Okay. Go ahead with item 5.2 for the extension. You're abstaining from that? And, and you want, you want to give the reason for that?
What, do we have to pull it off and vote on the rest of them? Or how?
Do we do it that way?
Yep. So we would, so.
Okay, let's vote on item 5.1, 5.3, 5.4, and 5.5. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries 5.2. Council Paulson.
Mayor, a payment from VITA to my business entity is on the schedule of bills, so I will abstain from the vote.
Okay, item 5.2, appointed out by Council Paulson. She's abstaining on the vote because of financial implication for recovery there through the billing, for the finance department, through our billing. So all those in favor of 5.2 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. None with one abstention. Thank you. Item six is appearances. There's no one scheduled before the council this evening. Move on to item seven, unfinished business. Item 7.1 is a Masabi Humane Society Animal Control Contract. We did have a meeting last night with the council, a special meeting at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center with the Masabi Humane Society in, in discussing the contract for services for 2026. And some remainder of some invoices for 2025. We're continuing to work on that as we move forward, and we anticipate some additional information forthcoming regarding that and some additional discussions probably next Tuesday after the committee home meeting and a closed session with respect to negotiations for that contract. Anything else to disseminate in that regard this evening? Council Motley.
Brett, I was just wondering, did you reach out, or did the city staff reach out to St. Louis County today about that bill?
Yeah, we have no answer yet.
You reached out to them today, again? Okay.
And that's, that's on the agenda later on down for us to address that particular issue.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Council Motley. Okay, move to item eight, discussion items. Item 8.1 is adopt the resolution to apply for and accept funds from the Community Development Block Grant Program in the City of Virginia for the Library ADA, that's the American Disabilities Act Privacy Pod Project.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Council Johnson. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Council Freely. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries item 8.2. Adopt the resolution for the Minnesota Deed Contamination Cleanup Grant for the Pohawke Leasing LLC Expansion Project.
So moved.
Moved by Council Bachsneider, supported by Council Paulson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.3, adopt the resolution for the City of Virginia to act as a fiscal agent for the Pohawke Leasing LLC to apply for the Minnesota Deed Contamination Cleanup Grant.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Council Bachsneider. Is there support?
Support.
By Council Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.4, adopt the resolution to apply for and accept funds from the Department of Iron Range Resources and Rehabilitation Center for a commercial redevelopment grant program for Pohawke Leasing LLC site cleanup.
So moved.
Support.
Is that correct? Yes. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.5, adopt the resolution to apply for and accept funds from the Department of Iron Range Resources Commercial Redevelopment Grant Program for the Law Office Remodel at 415 First Street South.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Council Paulson. Is there support?
Support.
By Council Bachsneider. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.6, adopt the resolution to approve the hire of the part-time recreation assistance at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. I think we, how many we, we had approved originally, up to 10 part, up to 10 full-time equivalents. We only have one working today. Is that right, in a part-time basis?
Three.
For the city?
Three part-time.
Three part-time. Okay, thank you. So once again, 8.6, adopt the resolution to approve the hire of recreation assistance.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Council Johnson. Is there support?
Support for discussion.
Support by Council Bachsneider for discussion. Further discussion, Council Bachsneider.
Thank you. Just to confirm, these part-time rec assistants are only scheduled on an as-needed basis when events are happening?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Bachsneider. Has been moved and supported. Further discussion, Council Motley.
Are they benefit eligible?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.7, which is in addition to the original agenda item, item 8.7, 8.8, 8.9, 8.10 are late additions to the agenda. Item 8.7 is approve the Laurentian Chamber of Commerce request for a community bonfire on November 19, 2025 at the Silverlake Beach.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Council Bachsneider, supported by Council Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.8, discuss the Humane Society invoice number six dated 6/14/2025. This is an item we did discuss last night at the Humane Society outside of the, outside of the discussion for the 2026 budget. There is a pending invoice that's been held in abeyance until we heard from St. Louis County. We sent a bill to the county for some animal removal on hoarding residents in the City of Virginia, which that building is owned by St. Louis County. It's been advised by legal and through the channels that this is a jurisdictional issue with the City of Virginia. We're obligated to pay for the costs associated with that, and we have sent a, an invoice to the St. Louis County who owns a building for reimbursement for this invoice. So, looking for a motion to, we're discussing it, so looking for some information or some action by the council regarding this invoice that's dated 6/20, 6/14/25. Council Freely.
So we budgeted accordingly, which was about a $45,000 allotment. And we.
We, we increased the budget for 2025 for the Humane Society from $41,000 to $45,000. And during the course of that discussion for the budget 2025, that $45,000 contract was not acceptable to the Humane Society, and we did not have a contract within the state law requires that we have some animal control. So during the course of that discussion on a temporary basis, we determined that we needed to continue with that contract. So the Humane Society, which is a no-kill shelter that provides veterinary services, surgical procedures, spay and neutering, and is, continues to maintain the ownership of the, and care and custody of these animals after five days, we, as a city council, agreed to pay for the custody and care until we can come to an agreement on a, on a budget that was unacceptable at that particular time, $45,000. And so we agreed to pay $600 per animal for all the services that are provided by the Humane Society. And during the course of that time, the cost for the $45,000 has been far surpassed. I think to date, we've paid $72,000 to the Humane Society for care and custody of the animals, and that doesn't include this invoice number six moving forward, which is about $29,000 or some change. And so by paying this invoice number six, we would, we would have allocated $100,000 to the Humane Society. Now, we had a discussion last night about the budget for 2026, and we'll be discussing it in a closed session next Tuesday at the committee of the home meeting. But right now, there's an outstanding invoice for services rendered that we have not paid that's been billed by the Humane Society to us, and that was billed on 6/14/25. And that's an outstanding bill of, I think it's around $29,000. So that's where we're at today, Council Freely.
And I guess I'm wondering why we exceeded the $45,000 budgeted allotment. Why would we have done so? Why wouldn't we have paid the $600 per animal up to $45,000, and then that's that?
Well, we didn't, the, the contract was never accepted by the Humane Society, so.
But we budgeted the $45,000 accordingly.
We did.
So we had $45,000 to invest in the animals that they needed assistance with.
Correct.
I don't think we should have exceeded that $45,000 allotment.
And I, I don't know what the council vote was. I can't recall the date, but I'll refer to our legal counsel for additional information. Mr. Lindsay, Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. I may be able to help answer that question just a bit. So we weren't able to come to a satisfactory contract. There was this per-animal charge that was put in place. Unfortunately, during the time that that per-animal charge was in place, there was two cat hoarding houses that resulted in a vast majority of these charges. And the city is obligated by state law to provide some amount, a minimum amount of animal control services. Unfortunately, the only provider that we had to, to satisfy that requirement, that state requirement, was the Humane Society that basically has a level of care that they provide, which is, is great for the animals. It's tough on city budgets. And so when those, when those two incidents of the animal, the, the cat hoarding houses came up, we, the city was kind of stuck. We had to discharge our duty under state law, and the only provider that we had to discharge that duty with was charging us $600 per cat, and also was charging $600 to the city for each kitten that was born in cust, in the custody of their facility, resulting from the cats that came from those properties.
And then, and just a little to pass forward even more for the, for the edification of those who are listening, and those who are here in the audience today, is that we did try to do our due diligence and set out a request for proposal for other animal control services, and we received no responses. So.
It kind of mystifies me, though, up until this year, all those prior years where we allowed $41,000, $40-some-odd thousand, we never had this inundation of animals that exceeded the level that we were at. It, to me, there's something just not reasonable about that.
I, and we did have a discussion last night that, that not to go into the, with respect to negotiating a contract for 2026, but there is, there was a request by, by the Humane Society back when we were paying $41,000 in the 2024 contract, and for 2025, their request was originally for $45,000. Now, they threw out a number last night that we're going to be talking about. We can't discuss that right now, but can we discuss the number they threw out in the public meeting?
Mayor, we can. And I think it's important, and I apologize for jumping in. I think it's important to note that they had initially requested an increase to $45,000, but they rescinded that offer before the city could accept it back in November of '24.
Does the $45,000, that's enough for the statutory obligation that the city has towards this service?
It's not a statutory obligation of that amount. The statutory obligation is the minimum, and I'll, I'll, and I know the answer to that, but I'll refer to legal for that explanation. Mr. Lindsay?
So the, the, the legal obligation that the city is to provide is when we have a stray animal or an animal that's picked up by the city, our obligation is actually to hold that animal for five days, to provide humane housing for it, food, and an opportunity to exercise. But we don't have a requirement, except in the case of a potential rabies exposure, or in the case of a dangerous dog, to hold those animals beyond five days. And we don't have the obligation to provide veterinarian care, spay and neuter services, all of those additional costs that meet with the Humane Society's mission, but don't necessarily align with what the, the minimum obligation of the city are. So there's, there's kind of competing interests, and there'll need to be further discussions to see if we can kind of meet in the middle somewhere to make sure the budgets are okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lindsay. Mr. Council Freely. Okay, thank you, Council Paulson.
Thank you. So I did want to address the fact, I believe that it was, there was a directive out there stating that we would be sending them a letter of 30-day termination to pay that $600 fee. Did we not send that out?
Mr. Lindsay?
I'm sorry, that item actually came up yesterday, and, and the, the official notice has not been sent, but there is ongoing discussion about that.
Okay, so we did not give them a, we would be terminating the $600, which wasn't an agreement, Brian, from what I recall. It was just an email exchange, and we started to pay it, and then basically it obligated us because we paid for a couple. And so it obligated us in going forward. There was no document in writing that this council passed an agreement on, because we did not. So because of one email exchange and a couple payments, it put the city on the hook at $600 an animal.
Mr. Lindsay?
Mayor, yeah, that was the, that was the only offer that they, that the Humane Society would extend to us at that point, short of accepting the, the amounts that they had put forward in their initial contract, which I believe those amounts were near $90,000 or $95,000 or something like that. And so as we were, as we were working through that, the Humane Society has, has indicated to us that they won't provide the service for less than $600 an animal, and they've indicated that at that amount, they believe that they're still losing money. And so.
And I follow what you're saying with their mission versus what our statutory obligation is. Those are two different things. And hopefully, a contract can be settled somewhere in between those two situations. But my point is, the city can't be held over a barrel in perpetuity on something that we need to execute it. Basically, a cease and, we're not going to do this anymore, cease and desist. So I'm not sure why we haven't done that or why we can't do that.
Mr. Lindsay?
Mayor, because we have a statutory minimum obligation that we have to discharge, and we've got to identify another vendor that can at least hold that statutory minimum.
So that, that's troubling to me. And I don't think it's fair. And if, say there was a cap, say we were at that $45,000 cap, and they already, like Council Freely was saying, we already went up to that $45,000, then it would be up to the Humane Society to either decide if they were going to take that, that animal, and, or they were going to divert, divert animals to another shelter. But we would still, we are providing our statutory obligation. It's not a month-to-month, it's an annual contract. So by engaging in that, we're satisfying the status, the statutory obligation, are we not?
Mr. Lindsay?
Thank you, Mayor. No, so the, the statutory obligation is that we have to provide housing, five-days housing for an animal that's taken in as a stray in the city. That's taken by the, by the city as a, as a stray. That's our obligation. And so generally, we contract with a provider to discharge that duty. But, but just simply entering the contract wouldn't necessarily satisfy our.
Okay. And I know, I don't mean to be splitting hairs here, but when we went, I actually had Megan print out the entire packet of the, all the cases from the. actually had Megan print out the entire packet of the, all the cases from the hoarding house and all the cats that were on there. And then, when it came back, and there were, I think, two or three pregnant females, and they delivered at the shelter, and we're being charged six hundred dollars per kitten that doesn't need to be spayed and neutered at that point in time. So, I was challenging the bill originally because these were kittens. So, I don't, I don't want to continue to split hairs, but I mean, this was a forty, wasn't it a forty-two thousand dollar bill? And then, we paid partial, we paid, except for on that address, because we were...
Thirty-seven thousand, two hundred.
Thirty-seven thousand. But how much of that, wasn't it twenty-five thousand was just from that one house?
Yeah, we paid nine thousand dollars of it.
So, I don't, I don't know how I feel, like, do you pay for spaying and neutering of little kittens? And then, when they're adopted, they're, they're charging the adoption fee. So, it's, I don't know, something has to be done, though, because I don't think, I mean, it's, we don't have it in our budget, so our discussion is, are we going to pay this bill or not? I don't know how to answer that question. And I'm not really comfortable saying yes until we get some of that answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Paulson. So, this came up last night at the meeting with the Humane Society outside the concept, the construct, or the skeletal discussion with respect to the, the two thousand twenty-six budget itself. This is a public meeting, so we can discuss it, it was a public meeting, and they had indicated, the Humane Society indicated, there's a staff was there, and their director was there, that moving forward with a contract negotiation for two thousand twenty-six would be difficult if we didn't address the invoice that was outstanding. And so, that's number one. Number two, we, there was a motion made at that meeting last night, which was a special open council meeting, that we would direct staff to, direct staff to reach out and determine whether or not, what the status of this bill is, if we're going to pay it or not. And that's what, was the motion was, to do, to have that decision made, but next week, we do have a motion, a discussion item here. It's not a request for any action, it's a discussion item, but action can be taken at this council meeting with respect to that. So, they have given us a, a proposal moving forward, and I can discuss that, correct? It was an open meeting, and they want a three-year proposal for two thousand twenty-six outside the payment of this invoice. For them to move forward, they want this invoice paid prior to negotiating anything further. So, what they, was indicated at that public meeting was that they were asking for eighty-five thousand, a three-year contract for eighty-five thousand dollars for one year, ninety thousand for the next year, and ninety-five thousand dollars for the following year, and indicating that actually, that's not enough money to cover the costs associated with the services they're providing, the city of Virginia is a no-kill shelter, and the indication was that they cost them about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year to do that. We have asked for some specific information for them to provide for us as we discuss the contract for two thousand twenty-six. One is their budget for two thousand twenty-four, what their expenses and revenue stream was for two thousand twenty-four, and what their expense and revenue stream is from January first of this year to present day, to determine what the costs associated with that. They indicate they have ten full-time employees, or ten part-time employees at eleven-some dollars an hour moving forward, so they, this is, this is the Masabi Humane Society, not the Virginia Humane Society, and so, we pay a portion of the costs associated with that. They had indicated to us that it is only, we pay, it's only twelve percent of their budget, and so, they have contracts with the city of Mount Iron, the city of Gilbert, and the city of Evolith, and are currently negotiating a, and have been for the, since January, one or right around there, sorry if I'm not correct, but they've been negotiating with St. Louis County for a contract there. And so, we're looking for what those costs associated with, and what they paid for in the, in the last couple of years, to get, if we could take a look at that and make a determination how we move forward for two thousand twenty-six. But as, as it stands now, this outstanding invoice is what the Humane Society indicated is an encumbrance to any further discussion and negotiations for the two thousand twenty-six contract. Did I say that correctly, Mr. Lindsey? Okay, thank you. So, item, item eight point eight is discuss the invoice, which is, that was outstanding, so, and we are discussing it now. Counselor Buck Schneider?
Thank you. I also want to add that as part of the negotiations, the Humane Society did tell us that they were open to negotiating those numbers. I had asked that, you know, if, if, so, we were given, they want a response within one week of if we will pay this outstanding invoice or not. If this invoice is paid, we're looking at paying a hundred thousand thus far this year. And so, I had asked that that be considered in any future contracts that we have, as well as the potential for no longer making payments for the rest of the year, and that request was denied at the time. And I did also throw out some numbers for a three-year contract, they had put out the eighty-five, ninety, ninety-five, I believe I threw out, was it sixty, seventy-five, ninety, and that was also denied. So, there was really no resolution at the end of the meeting, but they, they said that they're open to negotiations, so I'm hopeful we can come to some sort of resolution, because, as I mentioned at that meeting, I agree, forty-five isn't probably enough, but I do think eighty-five is too much to jump up to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Buck Schneider. So, the item today is eight point eight, is we are discussing the Humane Society invoice. Is there any, is there any action item that the council would like to take with respect to this invoice at this time? Counselor Motley?
Well, my understanding at the meeting last night was that they wanted a response within a week, and we were, my understanding is that we submitted another request from the county to see if they'd pay this bill, since it's their tax-forfeited property...
Yes.
...that we're being stuck paying for. So, I thought, my understanding is we have a week to see if the county, a yes or a no, and then, Brian, as our attorney, are we going to be forced to pay this outstanding bill?
Mr. Lindsey?
Mayor, so the position that the Humane Society has taken is that essentially, there was a provision that allowed them to collect six hundred dollars per animal, and they've provided the service, so that, the funds have already accrued. They also took the position that they were happy to see if we could recover some from the county, but that didn't matter much to them, as we were ultimately responsible for the bill.
But they gave us a week as of last night, which I thought is pretty generous, considering this happened in June, and now we're in October. And I feel for the Masabi Humane Society, their whole board was present last night at a special meeting. They are, we are their biggest dumping of animals, the city of Virginia, so they want the most from us, which is somewhat understandable, but we're stuck, and I, and we did, the big thing is when we reached out for an RFP and nobody else comes forward, and we have the Masabi Humane Society. So, I'm hoping that the county, who has a much larger tax base, will do something, since this is their property, but I feel like we're obligated to have to pay it if the county says no. But I would expect that we should be getting a response from them, since my understanding is, is we already submitted the bill to them however long ago, and we should get an answer soon. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Motley. Aside from the invoice that we're discussing today and the potential negotiation for a contract for two thousand twenty-six, the city does have other options, and we will discuss those other options, aside from using the Humane Society for services. There are other options available that we could meet statutory requirements of the, of the state, which is, keep in mind, is the options may not include all the services that the Humane Society provides, which is, includes the no-kill shelter, too. So, so we have to look at what we're doing here, but right now, the issue is on the table, is that we've discussed the Masabi Humane Society invoice that was dated six-fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, we're discussing it here, we discussed it at the meeting last night. So, if there isn't any other discussion or any action to be taken from the council, move on to the next item on the agenda. Counselor Buck Schneider?
Thank you. And, and from what Brian had said, I don't, I don't see a way around not paying this bill, so I will move the approval of the bill, including late fees, to be paid on Monday,
Support for discussion?
Motion by Counselor Buck Schneider, and supported by Counselor Motley for discussion, to direct staff to pay the outstanding invoice number six by Monday, October twentieth, which includes the fees and, and costs associated with that. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Johnson? Oh, please, Counselor Motley, and then we'll move to Counselor Johnson. Counselor Motley?
Was the twentieth or the nineteenth the date that there, from last night, that the Masabi Humane Society gave us to get their reply back on if the county's going to pay this outstanding bill or not? Because they said a week, so what would yesterday, week out?
Yesterday...
Yesterday was the thirteenth, the twentieth would be the seventh day for the week.
So, a full week would be through the twentieth, and your motion is for the twentieth?
On the twentieth.
On the twentieth, pending us no from the county? Would you be willing to amend your motion?
Amended to what?
Pending the county saying no, what if the county says yes, and now we're green-lighting this?
When we, when we invoice the county, would the county be reimbursing us or paying the Humane Society directly? So, since they would be reimbursing us, I don't think we need to wait for the county.
Agreed.
It will come back to us.
Thank you, Mayor.
We bill them. Thank you. So, there's a motion on the floor to pay the invoice, number six, to the Masabi Humane Society by Monday, October twentieth, with, motion by Counselor Buck Schneider, supported by Counselor Motley. Further discussion, Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm having a real hard time with a week deadline given to us arbitrarily by their council. The last night, the meeting did not start off great, the discussion was, pay us or we're not having a discussion, to the point where I made a motion to adjourn the meeting immediately, because there was no discussion starting. My quick math, based on the information I have, is thirteen thousand, two hundred dollars of this bill is based on kittens that were born after the house was closed and the animals were in, in the care of the Humane Society. We just heard about a list of things we shouldn't be paying for, we're already more than twice the budget of the animal control, and the budget is for animal control, it is not for animal nurturing, it's not for animal surgeries, it's not for animal pregnancies, it's for animal control. You call, you keep the dog for five days, it, it happens. Because of how they run their business, that is not what they do. Many times last night, we were basically giving an ultimatum, do it our way, or we're not doing anything. And so, your tax dollars, my tax dollars, are going to fund the Humane Society. Their logic is sixty percent of the animal intakes are from the city of Virginia. But as most people know, everybody dumps their animals in the city of Virginia, because they know we have an animal shelter, and they know it, they'll be going there. So, when it says, when they say they're coming from the city of Virginia, they're being picked up in the city of Virginia, but there's no proof they're from houses randomly in the city of Virginia. And so, I struggle with that logic, that we should be paying sixty percent of all of their budget because of that. I also will not be supporting paying them now, because a week is not enough time for us to deal with the, the St. Louis County. If, if we're serious about actually getting money from them, we will need to be contacting St. Louis County and having a discussion and getting an answer. At this point, my understanding is we've got no communication from St. Louis County about this. I'm seeing nodding from both Brian and Britt. So, I can't support spending another nineteen thousand dollars, or whatever the, the bill is at this time, simply because we've been giving an ultimatum. That's not how people negotiate in good faith. You're not given an ultimatum that either accepted or whatever. I was very frustrated last night at the meeting that it was not a conversation, it was demands made and offers shot down with zero discussion. So, I will not be supporting this, paying of this bill at this time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Counselor Freeley?
Yeah, I concur with Counselor Johnson. I think there's, we, in the seven years that I've sat on this council, there was never a negotiations impasse as there has been this year, and all of a sudden, this problem's exploding in our face, so there's something to be concerned about with regard to that. And our statutory obligation that Brian has talked about is a reasonable expectation, but when there's fifty-four cats that come out of one house, that's an unreasonable expectation to put on a city that's budgeted forty-five thousand dollars to attend to that obligation. So, because of that unreasonableness of that circumstance, I just can't agree that we should be paying this bill. It should be shared amongst all those that are contracting with that service, especially the county, if it came out of a tax-forfeited county home. So, I, I can't move forward with approving this payment as, as well.
Thank you, Counselor Freeley. Counselor Paulson?
Okay, first of all, thank you, and is there a late fee associated with this? How much? It's not in the packet.
I brought the original bill, I didn't, she brought that up last night that she was going to start.
Yeah, and if you, if you could do that, please, wait for Counselor, Counselor Beyondis to return before we, we vote.
Yeah, so, I'm not, so we're looking about the late fee. If you go on page fifty-six of our packet, and you read the tiny writing, what is an ACO live trap?
It's Animal Control Officer Trap With Trap Live Animals, Cats, Dogs.
So, they had a live trap at, outside that residence? And when it says, and pregnant, and pregnant, and pregnant, and then it lists kitten, 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 born at shelter, born at shelter, born at shelter, born at shelter, at six hundred dollars a pop? Did they spay and neuter those, or are we just getting billed for those? Did they actually take the action? No, Brian, I mean, this is serious. We're getting billed for, this is a lot of money, and did they, are any of these cats still at the shelter?
Mr. Lindsey?
So, the, the term of the contract, we're not necessarily, the, the charge that they're giving us of six hundred dollars, they, they've given us indications that part of those charges go to spay and neuter and to, to cover the costs, but there's no actual obligation on their part to perform the service for, to receive that fee.
That's baiting and switching. That's not, that should not be allowed. If they're going to bill the six hundred dollars, they need to provide those medical services. I mean, when we, then they stood up here the first time, that's what they told us that six hundred dollars was for.
And, and maybe I can clarify just more from the meeting last night. We asked, or I asked, and with the acquiescence of those who were present on the elected body last night, that the animal shelter provide those documents with, in respect to the budget and what, what their expenses were, and break that down. So, we're hoping to get that, you know...
What I would like to see us do is go to the statutory requirement, the minimum expectations of the statutory requirement, and get a cost associated with statutory minimum requirement. And that's what we need to agree to pay, and if there needs to be anything additional above and beyond that, the Masabi Humane Society is a nonprofit entity, am I correct? They are a nonprofit entity.
Yeah, that's correct.
So, they have the ability to fund raise, to grant, apply for grants, and continue however they want to continue in their budget, based upon the fact that they are a nonprofit entity, is that correct?
Mr. Lindsey?
Thank you, Mayor. That is correct, and we did, there was discussion during the open meeting last night about adjusting level of service, and, and what was indicated by the Humane Society was, they will not adjust the level of service that they provide, or the cost per animal. They would negotiate a long-term contract, though the numbers that were provided or suggested weren't acceptable, and, and they basically closed that conversation by saying, if you want a pound, go get a pound.
And so, that is the, that is the, that is the issue that you have, and I think the issue many of us have, there's other alternative avenues that we can pursue, aside from the Masabi Humane Society, to address that very issue you just described, to meet the minimum standards by the state statute.
My solution would be to find out the minimum statutory requirements and get some cost estimates associated with that. And I would not agree to pay a late fee, and I do not think it is fair that the city is asked to be, to be, I guess, bearing the cost of $600 per kitten that probably did get adopted out and did not get a spay or neuter service, or probably much, maybe they got some vaccinations. But I think that, that's a very, very unreasonable fee associated with a hoarding house of cats. So I won't, I won't vote in favor at this point in time, and if there's a, what is the late fee?
There's a late fee and interest. The late fee was 423, and interest is 8972, for a total of 51272.
Yeah, I won't agree to that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Paulson. So, it has been moved by Counselor Buck Schneider, supported by Counselor Motley. Further discussion, Counselor Buck Schneider.
Thank you. I do think that a week's time is fair in our discussion with them, since this is an outstanding invoice since June. And in order to come to some sort of resolution for next year, I think that we have to do some goodwill action. I also, like I've mentioned, I don't see a way that we can not pay this bill. I don't believe that inaction on our part is now their responsibility. If we could have come to some sort of resolution at the beginning of the year, then this wouldn't be a problem, and that is due to inaction on our part. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Buck Schneider. I would like to take note that it wasn't inaction on our part. We did make every conceivable effort to come to an agreement based on their request for the $45,000 for 2025, and then when that wasn't acceptable, I don't think it was a lack of effort on our part, it was a closed negotiation portion of that, so. Counselor Buck Schneider.
Thank you. I will have to respectfully disagree because I think that we could have done more to come to some sort of resolution. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other information you want to discuss before we vote? Okay, the motion on the floor, if you would read back the motion, please, Jenny.
Moved by Counselor Buck Schneider and supported by Counselor Motley to pay the invoice dated 6/14/2025 to Misabie Humane Society, and late fee by October 20th, 2025.
Thank you. Moved and supported, further discussion, Counselor Buck Schneider, then back over to Counselor Motley. Counselor Buck Schneider.
Thank you. I believe my motion was to pay it on October 20th, so we have this week to still discuss with the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
The motion amended to make sure it indicates that on October the 20th. Further discussion, Counselor Motley.
So, Mr. Mayor, you said there was other options. When we reached out for other RFPs, nobody responded, so what are other options under our state obligations if we, like, what is, what else is there?
Well, there's a different level of service that can be provided, and it could be done either through an RFP or through, within the city of Virginia. Example, there's a community that has a pound master, they have a dog pound, it's called, and that's what was indicated last night, and they collect the animals, the city pays that individual, they have a holding facility for those animals, and they have the minimum statutory requirement of collecting the animals and holding them for five days in hope that the owner comes, or maybe its owner relinquished, and after those five days, they divert, they find another shelter for them to go in, and if they don't, they take action, they are not a no-kill shelter, so there's euthanization issues in respect to this particular community. So that's a difference between a dog pound and a Humane Society.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody in Virginia that does that? Do we have a pound in Virginia?
No, we used to have. It used to be the Virginia Dog Pound, but now it became the Misabie Humane Society, which serves the Quad Cities and beyond, and so we no longer have a dog pound. We used to have one, it used to be down where the, where the current Misabie Humane Society is, it was a building across the street, and Mr. Laokanaway was our last Dog Pound Master and would manage the animals pursuant to the minimum requirements under the law.
So I get that, but, so we sent out an RFP, nobody responded, so are you saying we have to send out another RFP, possibly for pound, instead of Humane Society-type services?
Well, I guess we're discussing even first, so yeah, we have those, that's an option. The other option is to work with the other communities to find one particular shelter, and then all have a dog pound there, and all share the expenses there, which be, could be significantly less potentially. These are options to explore. I'm not saying we're going to do that, this is a decision that the elected body has to make, but there are other options to meet the minimum requirements under the law, outside of the higher level of service that's provided by the Misabie Humane Society.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor Caffey. So, just received some communication that, and I don't know if this might need to be verified by legal, but did not find a Minnesota statute that expressly requires every city, including Virginia, to maintain its own formal animal control department or animal services unit. Instead, the state provides enabling laws and minimum standards, and cities may adopt ordinances and contracts to provide those services. Minnesota statutes contain various animal-related laws, which I'm sure you know, are in section, chapter 343, 346, 347. Under 347.14, any person may seize or impound an unlicensed dog running at large. If a city has a humane officer, the seized dog is delivered to that officer; if not, a peace officer handles it. The state also mandates that impounded or stray animals be held by public authority, must be held for redemption at at least five business days unless local ordinances specify longer. Under Minnesota rules, for strays, animals found stray, Minnesota statute 346.021 requires the finder to file notice or to surrender the animal to a local animal control agency or to a kennel. These provisions imply that there must be some entity, municipal, county, contractor, or volunteer in each jurisdiction, that is able to seize, impound, or enforce local ordinance, handle stray animals, et cetera. But the statute does not demand that a city itself directly employ animal control officers or maintain a separate department, that is left to local discretion. So my question is, if the county pays something for that, and it is located in St. Louis County, is Virginia already under the state statutory requirements because the county is also paying some of that portion? And they locate, they are located in St. Louis County? Because I don't, I think that this has gone on long enough at $600, where we have no idea if those animals are being treated for a full $600. But according to what this, and I will pass this email along to you, if that is the case, Brian, I feel that we have some legal grounds in which to challenge this.
Mr. Lindsey?
Thanks, Mayor. I don't, I don't, I don't disagree, I just reviewed all of these animal ordinances yesterday before our meeting, and I don't, I agree that there is no specific responsibility that the city maintain its own internal and animal control officer, animal control services. At the end of the day, the regulation is that if, that if an animal is seized within the city of Virginia, we've got to provide for its holding for five, for five business days, and then we have to maintain records about its identity, location of capture, and things like that for six months. And so, we may be able to utilize a county service to discharge that duty, but at the end of the day, the duty, the responsibility, however it's discharged, lays with the city.
But it says, there's no single Minnesota state statute that explicitly requires every city to have a dedicated animal control department.
It does not, it just says that we have to provide some type of service.
So the service is here, it's a nonprofit entity service, it's located in Virginia, why do we have to pay anything?
Uh, Mr. Lindsey?
I mean, I feel like it's a legitimate question if it's not statutorily required.
Mr. Lindsey?
And Mayor, perhaps, Counselor, could we speak after the meeting, and I can, I'll kind of walk through it with you?
Well, I'm happy to do that, it's just, we're being held over a barrel at $600 per animal to over, at over $100,000. I want to know what we are legally obligated to do and what we don't have to do. I don't think it's fair that we are going back and forth, we've been negotiating this contract since May. And we have put full faith effort, we actually, I went and got all of the paperwork on all of these animals, drove past the house, we've, we've done due diligence, we talked to them about the bill, we even talked to them, Counselor Johnson, do you remember what that was, that service out of Minneapolis that comes up and they went to Chisholm, and they did spaying and neutering for, at no charge? So if there was a hoarding house and there were 50 cats, why didn't they pick up the phone and call a service that provides that?
That's a question for them.
And I don't think it should be on the back of the taxpayers of the city of Virginia of Minnesota to pay $600 when we don't even know if that spaying and neutering was performed.
Yeah, and your arguments are legitimate, one or the other, you know, this is, this is a discussion that's been going on longer than anticipated, but we need to continue to vet this out, so it's on the agenda to discuss. There's other issues with respect to dangerous, statute for dangerous animals, and how, if there's a dangerous animal, let's say there's a dog bite, that animal has to be quarantined, who's responsible for quarantining that animal? We are.
And there are local kennels clubs that are around that would probably help us out with that.
Correct.
So, I mean, I just, I don't, I'm not going to be held over a barrel by somebody that's not willing to negotiate. I don't think that that's good faith at all.
So...
And I don't think that this bill is good faith either.
We have all, and have discussed the options that we have. The agenda item is, we're discussing the payment of this invoice. The rest of this is ancillary, which we'll be discussing, I'm sure, prior to finding some other source of service other than the Humane Society potentially for 2026. But the motion on the floor is to pay the invoice by Monday, October 20th. That's the motion, and the second, is there any further discussion? Please, Counselor Paulson.
I guess I would just finish, I just can't support that going forward.
That's fine.
At all, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Biondich.
By not paying it, what will happen?
Well, we have one week.
We're obligated to do this?
Mr. Lindsey?
If we, if we don't pay the bill, the most likely outcome is we'll be sued.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Biondich, please, continue.
Sorry, I know we've spent a lot of time on this, and Mr. Freely, to be fair, last night was a long discussion on how this cost came to be what it is. This was a tax-forfeited home that belongs to the county, does not belong to the city of Virginia. It was not boarded properly, so cats were going in there, and it wasn't brought to the attention until much later when it was a truly hoarding of, I mean, it was loaded with cats. Unfortunately, the city of Virginia, it's in our jurisdiction, even though it's a county-owned home, and they didn't board it where no animals can get in there. We are, that was, that was my frustration. This was nothing to do with us doing anything wrong. It was a county-owned tax-forfeited home that was vacant and not boarded up. Animals got in there and they multiplied.
Counselor Paulson?
Thank you. I have one, just one further comment, and, so just to clarify, we would never be receiving a bill this large because we would have had a contract signed, and they would have had to take care of these animals. However, they decided to pay for the care of those animals, if they would have gone into negotiation with the city of Virginia instead of rejected our contract, our offer, and stopped the conversation, we would never have been given a bill for that hoarding house. That would have just been part of their duties and responsibilities. Am I correct in saying that?
Uh...
And now it's an à la carte?
I have a, Mr. Lindsey?
So, the answer to that question is complicated. There was, again, there was the initial request that we increase the contract to $45,000. They rescinded before we could accept that. They jumped the contract price nearly double, when the city didn't accept that increase because we hadn't budgeted the funds. We kind of ended up in this à la carte, I guess, for lack of a better phrase, of this per-animal arrangement, not counting on running into these two cat-hoarding properties.
And I understand that, the point, the point is, if there's a hoarding house or not, I guess that's not the point. If there was a contract in place, we would never be receiving a bill for $32,000. That would just be part of what we pay them to take care of, and it's located in the city of Virginia. So I do take pause when we get a bill for this amount à la carte, when, had they agreed to a contract, which we have been trying for, I would say, going on five or six months, probably even longer than that, and then because we made a mistake of paying it one or two times, $600, I would like that email correspondence, if we could have that sent to us, how that transpired, how now all of a sudden the city is under obligation when this council did not approve $600 until after we were told, we've done it once or twice, so now you recommended that we had to continue. Because we did not have that resolution before that. And that, that is very concerning to me, we can't, we can't operate like that, otherwise we get held over a barrel.
I think in the contract that we...
There is no contract.
If I may, please, explain, and then you can, then you can, if, give me a minute? Thank you. So, in the contract, it wasn't accepted. In the contract before, there's a, there's a clause in that contract, and I should have brought it upstairs with me here, the clause in that contract that indicates that if there's a hoarding situation, that they would, they would keep up to a certain amount of animals for, for, for the one fee, and then anything over a certain amount, or maybe it was 10 animals, then it would be $600 an animal thereafter. And that was in the contract. So, you know, I understand where you're coming from, Counselor Paulson, I just want to point that out, please, continue.
Was that in the previous contract that we had assigned and executed contract with them? Or was not?
No, I'm just saying, this was in the proposed contract.
Yeah, so that we do not have a contract, that's my point, and I don't feel comfortable moving forward.
Yeah, no, we do not have a contract, that is correct. Thank you. Okay, so, it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Buck Schneider.
Thank you. While I understand the Humane Society declined our $45,000 proposal, or they withdrew it prior to accepting, you know, they did come back with a counterproposal, and had we accepted that at the time, we would have paid less this year than what we're going to be paying. We're already looking at, you know, over $70,000 with about a $30,000 bill outstanding, and, you know, it's October, so if we would have just accepted that bill, or tried to negotiate more at the time, we would not be facing this problem right now. Thank you.
Well, not to get into the weeds about the negotiation process in the past, is that there were other, there were other, it wasn't just a stop, there were other options moving forward, and they were not, they were not acceptable, so I don't want to get into weeds about that. Okay? So, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, a motion by Counselor Buck Schneider, supported by Counselor Motley, to pay the invoice number six to the Humane Society by, on Monday, October the 20th. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Paulson? Paulson? Biondich?
Aye.
Buck Schneider?
Aye.
Freely?
No.
Caffey?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
Motley?
Yes.
Motion fails four to three. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Johnson?
I would like to move to direct staff to look at internal systems and cooperative discussions with other entities to manage animal control within the city limits of Virginia to meet state statutes.
Motion by Counselor Johnson to direct staff to seek other alternatives for animal control, is there support for that?
Support.
Support by Counselor Paulson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Paulson? Paulson? Biondich?
Aye.
Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Roll call, please, Jenny.
Biondich?
No.
Bachsneider?
No.
Freely?
Aye.
Cuffy?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motley?
Yes.
Paulson?
Aye.
I'm sorry, what was your, yours was a yes or no? No, so motion passes five to, thank you. Okay. Let's move on to item 8.9. The NIP Point 10 has adopted a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the city-held investments in the Forem Fund. Just to make that for it, that we had money in our street improvement money that we received for the payment of these street projects. We didn't need it at the time, so instead of holding that in abeyance, we invested that money to gain some interest on that. And now when these do, the bonds come due for the street project, we're going to pull that out to pay for that. Is that correct, Britt?
The payments we approved earlier today need to be paid. So we, we had the money gaining some interest in the investment account. We need to pull it back into our checking account.
Thank you very much. Moved, moved by Counselor Freely and supported by Counselor Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.10, adopted resolution authorizing to staff to apply for and accept funds from the Department of Iron Range Resources Public Works Grant Program for the 2026 citywide infrastructure improvement projects.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Bachsneider. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Motley. Further discussion? Can we give the amount that we're applying for or not?
My plan is to apply for 1.5 million for both the steam conversions and also the Sixth Avenue, small portion of water line we're doing next year.
Thank you. For steam conversion and the Sixth Avenue project, which is going to be significant. So thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Move to item nine, committee reports. 9.1, the committee, the whole meeting that was held on October 7th, 2025, turn this portion of our city council meeting over to our city administrator, Britt C. Benes. Britt?
The committee, the whole meeting on October 7th. It was moved and supported to approve the resolution to hire a patrol officer.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson. Is there support?
Support for discussion.
Support by Counselor Freely for further discussion. Uh, this is a replacement for one that left. Further discussion, Counselor Freely.
Where are we at in the filling of our roster? I know we're short, but how short are we?
Five.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we have allocation of 25 police officers, and we currently have 20. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Moved and supported to approve the resolution to offer a lateral transfer and hire a police officer. So moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Motley and supported by Counselor Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Had discussion regarding the request to purchase the John Deere 325G compact track loader, which is a skid steer, at a total cost of $106,925, with further discussion at today's council meeting. As I had stated in an email to the council, we do have money left in the equipment bond that we have not, the equipment bond from 2023, that we have not expended fully yet, and this dollar amount could come out of that equipment bond.
I will move the purchase coming out of the equipment bond.
Moved by Counselor Johnson. Is there support?
All support for discussion.
Support by Counselor Freely for further discussion. These money that comes off the equipment that we took out, those funds have to be expended, correct?
If we don't expend them on equipment, it just shortens the term of the payments.
Shortens the term of the payment, thank you. Further discussion, Counselor Freely.
So I'm of the mind that this is an essential piece of equipment for snow removal at the new public safety building. And I, my major concern would be that there is space for this to be able to be stored there and utilized there without having to be trailered in. That's already been set aside and determined. Thank you.
It has been moved and supported. Further discussion, Counselor Motley.
So Jim had said he didn't need some of the extra pieces with this equipment. Was this just for the skid steer or was this with the additional pieces that he said he didn't need? Because he specifically stated there were some pieces he didn't need.
The pieces he is not purchasing are, would be the brush and a couple of other pieces that we already have. What he's purchasing today with this one is the blower and the mower deck.
Thank you, just one clarification.
We have a shovel, we have a brush, we have a couple other, paper that we already have that will attach to this that we don't need to purchase again.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Motley. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I would actually like to see the, the bond reduced instead of expending, if at all possible. And what I think I would like to see is maybe we wait until after the snow season happens and see how that building is maintained and, because I know the fire department said that they were going to help out with that, and I don't know if they're plowing, Britt, have, have we gotten a plan in place on that?
They don't have a plow. The public fire department does not.
Okay, how do they clear what they've got now?
Come and do the parking lot.
Okay. So that's, that's how that.
They shovel the sidewalks in front of the.
So they don't shovel their own sidewalks at the fire department?
They shovel it in front of the ambulance bay.
Yep.
And we plow the side of the parking lot.
Okay. So I feel like we have enough equipment throughout the city that we could utilize if need be. So instead of making this large purchase, I feel like maybe let them go for this season. And if we need it in 2027, then we can have a discussion in 2027. Or if they, they say they need it, I, I thought this was readily available, this piece of equipment. So maybe we let the snow go a couple, you know, a little, you know, into the season and see how that snow clearing and maintenance goes. And if this is something that we need, then maybe we have this additional discussion. Otherwise, I would, I think having that reduction of the bond would be appropriate. Or saving this for an additional piece of equipment for a rainy day if we needed it next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Paulson. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not willing to put public safety at risk just to see how it goes for the next couple of months. It's a huge lot in the middle of a snowstorm. In the more early mornings after a evening snowstorm, the lot needs to be cleared immediately for easy access and easy entrance, especially if we're talking about, for the snow with accidents and first response to the surrounding communities. I think this is a good investment. It will be there. My understanding is that during the summer, it will be relocated to be utilized between Parks and Rec and Public Works, which will create efficiencies and will have less downtime when we need to get things done around the city. So I will be supporting the purchase of this equipment as a public safety preventative measure, as well as being able to be used in several departments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. In addition to that, I'll just make one quick comment that at 3 o'clock in the morning or 2 o'clock in the morning, when an ambulance call goes out and there's, you know, two feet of snow or whatever the case may be, somebody has to clear that out of there. You're going to call maintenance guy out, or we have to find another piece of equipment to store there. So moved and supported. Further discussion, Counselor Biondich.
Thank you. So before this building, when, when they had, when we had snowstorms, what time were the plows called out?
Three.
3 o'clock in the morning with a minimum of two inches of snow.
And I'm, I'm kind of like, it's, it's almost like when we have, when we know we have money, we're going to spend it. And that's my, that's, that's what we heard tonight. Is if there is money left, we're going to find a way to use it. I don't know, I'm, I'm torn on this. We knew this building was coming, but we, we, we find a pocket of money that we could lessen payments or spend when we are doing the job now. I mean, if, how would, how was that department? Granted, they didn't have that long of a shot to get out.
Didn't have a parking lot like they have now.
All right.
Thank you, Counselor Biondich. Counselor Paulson? And then over to Counselor Motley. Counselor Paulson?
So we were going out with regular plow trucks to plow the parking lot in the current building. And we would be going out with our current plows to plow the parking lot. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so the only thing that this skid steer would be used for is sidewalks?
Nope, the parking lots. It would be used because it has a front parking lot where the public is with the roundabout.
So you'd use this skid steer to, as, instead of a plow truck?
Correct.
And, okay, since we got input from one department head, which is Public Works, when we talked about this and there was some, maybe not clear understanding from the other two depart, the other departments that were utilizing the building, have we gotten feedback from those departments with an actual plan in place to advise us going forward? We've only heard from one department head.
I did speak to them, and they all got the same email that you guys got. And their response was as long as it's not coming out of our budget, we're fine.
But it's coming out of the, a bond, which we may need to utilize. I mean, if it wasn't coming out of their budget, they said it wasn't, then we don't want it. We don't need it. But now if it's not coming out of their budget and it's coming out of a bond, equipment bond, then let's get it. So which is it? Do we need it or not need it? That doesn't make sense to me. So I won't be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Motley?
I actually was thinking the same thing as you when it came to the skid steer versus a plow truck. If you need an emergency response and you need the fire or the, or ambulance, the plow trucks plow the way. I don't know how a skid steer is going to stop the City of Virginia's ability to get the ambulance out of the garage when we have plow trucks that can make a pass and boom, it's wide open. I am on the thought also of probably backtracking on supporting this because I don't think it's going to stop an ambulance or a fire truck from getting out of the garage when we have plow trucks. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So we would probably have to put a plow truck there in the wintertime because they're not going to come, they'll come at 3 o'clock. So if, if it's mid and it's blowing snow, then it'll come out to 3 o'clock. And so if the ambulance needs to get out, we need to plow them out of there. So whether it's a skid steer or whether it's a plow truck or whatever the case may be, something's going to have to be there to get the emergency vehicles moving out of there. So I would, I, I'm amenable to, to hold this in abeyance, but I think that instead of waiting until the end of the next year, wait till the snow season goes over. If it, if it's a problem and we can't remove the snow and there's an issue there, I would like to have the opportunity to revisit this purchase. Counselor Motley?
Sure. I mean, yeah, I, my light's off, I said things.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, we still, okay, thank you. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Biondich?
And I'm, and I'm fine with that if, you know, if we can see how it goes and as long as it's readily available, if we need it. I don't know if schedules need to be adjusted. I mean, we get a, we get a snow report pretty early on when we're getting a big dump of snow that people could be on call if need be to get that department plowed out. Correct?
We're down two heavy equipment operators. We usually have three graders out. We're down one grader, so we're already behind a bit, but.
And this would, I mean, I would think public safety would be a priority.
It's not just, it's not just their parking lot. We have to do the snow route, which is Second Avenue, Ninth Avenue.
Yes.
Ninth Street North, so they're also there too.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Counselor Biondich. It has been moved and supported to, to move forward with the purchase of the 2025 John Deere 325G compact track loader skid steer in the amount of $106,925. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Motley, back to Counselor Motley and over to Counselor Freely. Counselor Motley?
I'll make, I'll make this quick. So I know the deal is that, obviously, some want this at the public safety building, and we're short-staffed with Public Works. Are you saying it's possible a police or a fire person would be running this skid steer?
Don't believe so.
Okay, that's what I'll need here. Thank you.
Yeah, I know there are heavy equipment operators under the, under the ASME contract. So thank you. Additional discussion, Counselor Freely?
So then, does this mean that there's going to be at 3 o'clock in the morning a Public Works employee at the? So coming with this will also be the hiring of a new personnel then?
No.
No? But there will be somebody that's going to be doing maintenance and custodial and on-site at that building to be able to drive this at 3:00 in the morning?
We haven't decided that yet either.
That.
But that's the intent.
But that's a concern for me because if we need this equipment, but we don't have the guy there to drive it at 3:00 in the morning, then I think we're premature in needing that equipment.
That's the intent is to have it. If you're going to have one person take care of that entire building, you probably should give them some equipment to take care of that entire building. That's what Jim Rossett was saying at the last meeting.
We're actually going to need two people. If you're going to have one that's going to be there at 3:00 in the morning, you're going to have somebody else on another shift as well. Would we not?
We don't here.
I guess I'm just trying to wrap my mind around who's going to be opening the door and running the skid steer at 3:00 in the morning if it's not somebody on-site.
Mm-hmm, that's the intent, is that whoever we assign as custodial is going to be the person that's going to be doing that.
Coming there to do it or being there?
Coming there to do it. Because their normal day wouldn't start at 3:00. It would be, we're going out at 3:00 because it's snowing.
That kind of defeats the purpose of why we need this equipment if it's, somebody has to come there anyhow. It could come there with some other piece of equipment and clear it out. I mean, that's what I picture. I don't know that for a fact, but that's what I picture. It's like if you're sending somebody there to run that thing that's being housed there, you could be sending somebody already in something to go and clear it. So I.
I think that's a larger discussion we need to have.
Yeah.
So, any further discussion? I, I'd like to just weigh in just for a moment. I think that this is a piece of equipment that can be purchased and may, may be necessary to purchase, but there are questions about who's going to operate it and, and under what circumstances. So, I mean, if we're not, if we're looking at maybe waiting until we can determine whether or not this is something that's absolutely necessary to purchase, and if it bodes well for additional discussion with who's going to staff it and how that operates, going to be operated, maybe it would be in our best interest to table this until further notice. It's supposed to, by taking a vote to purchase or not.
I will move to table.
Counselor Paulson moves to table this request to purchase, resolution to purchase. Is there support for the tabling motion?
Support.
Support for Counselor Motley. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Opposed? Roll call, please, Jenny.
Councilor Bachschnider?
Aye.
Councilor Freedle?
Aye.
Mayor Cuffee?
Aye.
Councilor Johnson?
No.
Councilor Motley?
Yes.
Councilor Paulson?
Aye.
Councilor Beyondich?
Aye.
A motion passes 6-1. Thank you. Next item D, please.
Thank you. Item number 9.1D is a request to approve the purchase of tires and rims for the 2015 John Deere 644 loader at a cost of $22,702.56.
Okay, move to approve by Councilor Johnson. Is there support?
All support for discussion.
Support by Councilor Freedle for discussion. Further discussion, Councilor Freedle?
So these, it's time that it needs to be repaired. I mean.
2015 vehicle, yes.
The tires are 10 years old.
Okay, thank you. That's all I need to.
Councilor Bachschnider?
Thank you. Can you remind us where we are getting the funds for this? I know we have discussions.
Contingency.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Councilor Beyondich?
Would you be able to send us the balance in that contingency fund?
I did last week. It's $87,000.
Eighty-seven. Thank you.
Now, thank you, Councilor Beyondich. So it has been moved and supported to approve the purchase of tires and rims for the 2015 John Deere 644 loader at a cost of $22,702.56 to be taken out of the contingency fund. Is there any further discussion? A hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It's moved and supported to approve the 2026 contract fee for People's Services Contract for the operation of the wastewater treatment facility and to authorize the mayor to sign the necessary documents.
Support.
Okay, three different things. So I think it was moved by Councilor Paulson and supported by Councilor Johnson. Is that correct? Okay, is there any further discussion? A hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It's moved and supported to approve the quote from Knox for a narcotic med vault for the Sprint Medic Units.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Councilor Johnson. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilor Bachschnider. Further discussion? This is a fully reimbursable expenditure for the Sprint Medic Unit from the state of Minnesota. No cost out of the city budget. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It's moved and supported to approve the resolution for the purchase of items for the outfitting of the two Sprint Medic Vehicles at a cost of $17,125.90 each.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Councilor Freedle and supported by Councilor Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Once again, this is fully reimbursable by the state of Minnesota for the Sprint Medical Team for that. So it's moved and supported. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Had discussion regarding the special assessments for Phase 2 of the 2023-2025 Street Project. During the discussion, we mentioned that the last time we had special assessments, we did reduce them down to the state required minimum of 20% of the overall project cost. Thus, it was moved and supported to approve or bring forward the resolution for the special assessments for 10th Avenue West, 13th Street South, Sixth Avenue West, and 17th Street South, and to set the assessment at 20% of the project cost as per state statute and eliminate the lower of the two assessments for those with a dual assessment for one parcel in this project.
So moved.
A move to approve by Councilor, Beyondich, I'm saying, no, Councilor Motley? Supported by Councilor Beyondich. Okay, thank you. Moved by Councilor Motley, supported by Councilor Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? A hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Went into closed session to discuss a couple of items. The first one was an offer for the purchase of real property owned by the city at 915-929-17TH STREET NORTH as per Minnesota Statute 13D04 for real estate negotiations. When we came out, it was moved and supported to direct staff to proceed with negotiations for the sale of this property located at 915-929-17TH STREET.
So moved.
A move to approve by Councilor Bachschnider. Is there support?
Support.
By Councilor Motley. Is there any further discussion? A hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Roll call, please, Jenny.
Councilor Freedle?
Aye.
Mayor Cuffee?
Aye.
Councilor Johnson?
No.
Councilor Motley?
Yes.
Councilor Paulson?
Aye.
Councilor Beyondich?
Aye.
Councilor Bachschnider?
Aye.
A motion passes 6-1. Thank you.
We also were in closed session to discuss employment contracts for the Finance Director and HR Coordinator as per Minnesota Statutes 13D05, subdivision 3A. When we came out of the closed session, it was moved and supported to approve the Finance Director Contract with Megan Bothwell as, with modifications as discussed in the closed session.
So moved.
A move to approve by Councilor Freedle and supported by Councilor Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Welcome aboard, Megan. Happy to have you. So any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the Human Resources Coordinator Contract with Joy Rudabush as presented.
So moved.
A move to approve by Councilor Johnson. Is there support?
Support.
By Councilor Paulson. Is there any further discussion? A hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
No further items from that meeting?
Thank you. Move to item number 10 on the agenda. Commission Liaison Reports. Does any city council have a commission or liaison report they'd like to disseminate today? Okay, thank you. We'll move to item number 11, Department Head Reports. We have two department heads in the audience. Does any department head like to give a report this evening? Please come forward. Jody Grebanowski, our Library Director, is here. And Brian Silber, our Park and Rec Director, is here. Once again, Jody, welcome to the council meeting. Thank you.
Good evening. So a couple of highlights from events this week. So tomorrow, if you'd like to come and dance at the library at 3:00, we're having a '90s rave. So bring out your neon. It is for everybody. The book club is on Thursday at 1:00. I don't remember the title. Oh, shoot. Anyway, been a long day. Friday, we have Storytime, 10:30 in the morning. We also have an A Legacy Event, which is the money that is supported through different funding through the state of Minnesota. And it's, they brought their song, so it's at 1:00 in the library. So come join us. The following week, we have tech assistance at 10:00 in the morning. Come make baby hats and baby booties and blankets at Yards of Yarn. We're working, we were left some patterns in some yarn to do that. But the cool thing is, the Virginia Public Library was given a 2025 Aging Impact Award by the Arrowhead Area Aging on Aging and the Age Friendly Minnesota Award. So we received that this week. So we'll be doing some posts about that. So mostly around the fact that we've been working really hard on programming for intergenerational and for everybody, but also doing what we can within our building to make it accessible for everyone. So just kind of universal design, thinking about universal programming. And so we were very honored to be nominated, and even more fun that we got selected. So if you have any questions, you can give us a call at 218-748-7525. Please join us for our programs. We've got some fun stuff coming up in November, December to help keep those winter blues away, so.
Thank you, Jody, very much, as always. Any other department head reports to be disseminated today? Brian, the beginning of the council meeting, all the way to the end.
All the way to the end. You don't think I could pass up an opportunity to come to the mic, do you? One, I'd like to thank those that remain in the audience. I'm glad that I took the opportunity at the beginning of the meeting to pitch the 2025 Pan Continental Curling Championships. If you missed that, it begins this Sunday at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center and then continues all next week, both at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center and at the curling facility in Evlith. But unfortunately, summer has come to an end as our winter coats are starting to tell us as we go outside and as we have to scrape the frost off our cars in the mornings. But that means that some of our winter programming is beginning. Wanted to remind you that one of our summer programs continues year-round. On Wednesday evening, we will be continuing Drum Night at the Klein-Coopalletti Building from 6:00 to 8:00. So come out and become acquainted with the Native American drum. We encourage you to come to that each Wednesday night from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Klein-Coopalletti Building. Also, this winter, we are happy to announce that we will have the return of the Winter 100 Walking Challenge at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. This is a friendly competition amongst your neighbors and your friends at the event center to see who can walk 100 miles on the walking track throughout the winter. We will have sign-ups for this program beginning shortly. In addition, tickets will be going on sale very soon for the annual breakfast and this year Skate with Santa and Frosty. It was a program that was part of the Festival of Trees. This year will be being held at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center on Saturday, November 22nd. We hope that you guys will come out for that. In addition, I have heard a little rumor that hockey season is going to be starting soon. So there will be one or two hockey games that you might want to check out on the schedule this year. We've got a plethora of boys, girls, and youth hockey games scheduled at the event center. So hope to see you and you at the event center and our other park facilities in the very near future. Thank you and have a wonderful night.
Brian, one more, what's for breakfast on November 22nd? Do we know?
What is what?
What's for breakfast for that?
Pancakes and sausage.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Brian. Okay, any other department reports? We'll go from left to right. Britt, anything?
I actually have a lot to say today.
Well, let's go. Okay.
I do want to say thank you to Laurentian Chamber, Revive Virginia was nominated nonprofit of the year. This year, Revive Virginia has worked really hard on doing some fun events downtown. Our Food Truck Festival had a few less people than last year. We only had 3,000 this year instead of 4,000 the year before. But that's quite an accomplishment for a one-day event downtown Virginia. And it was, the threat of rain all day kind of made it kind of a guess, are you going to get rain done or not? But it was still a really fun day. We had a great time. Revive Virginia is going to be doing a trunk retreat on Halloween downtown. We're encouraging any individuals or groups that want to come with us. Bring your car downtown. If you've got permission to park in the empty lots that are owned by private people downtown. We're going to, City Hall's going to, Mayor and I are going to be outside City Hall with a tent. Stop by City Hall. They've got some treats for you. The library is going to have a tent. Be outside City Library, pick up some treats there from 4:00 to 6:00 on Halloween. And then, of course, we're working on the Twilight Holiday Parade on November 22nd. And this year, we are extending the route up Fifth Avenue to Fourth Street. So you'll go past the school and pass by the courthouse there. It's just gotten to be such a big parade that people don't have a lot of room to stand, so we need to move down a little bit. So that's a fun, exciting thing, November 22nd, 5:15, fireworks at 6:15.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Britt. Anything from Legal?
Mayor, I said too much already.
Oh, you've been, you're the, you're the go-to person for legal opinions and advice, and we thank you for that. Megan, our new Finance Director, but not a new employee for the City of Virginia. Been here for, what, 14 years? 13 years? So welcome aboard once again. And anything you wanted to say may to us this evening? Thank you. Jenny, thank you for serving as our fill-in for our city clerk. So thank you for taking.
Did you forget her already?
So do you have anything? What's that? What's that?
Did you forget her already? Pam would be upset.
Yeah. Well, I was trying to, trying to be as more tactful as possible with a little glit, but I didn't, wasn't successful at doing that, so.
Not a problem at all, Mayor. Thank you. Happy to help in any way I can. I do have one quick just update from Planning and Zoning, not as exciting as everyone else's updates this evening. However, we did have a Planning and Zoning meeting last Monday. There was not a quorum, so no motions were made, but we had a healthy discussion on ordinance amendments and potential of zoning map amendments throughout the city to include updates where public property is no longer in public ownership and/or development of a perhaps mixed-use zone district.
And so you have some meetings with the landlords coming up too with respect to that, or?
We do not have meetings with landlords coming up in respect to that.
Okay.
But we have just been having internal discussions with planning and zoning on how we want to move forward to recommend any time by changes to council.
Okay, thank you very much, Jenny. Okay, any other department reports moving forward to council reports? Does any council have a report they'd like to give this evening? Councilor Paulson?
Thank you. I just have a one quick plug. I just want to say congratulations to the Rock Ridge Girls Tennis, Tennis Team. They were the Section AA Champions and go to, move to state next week. So I want to say congratulations. And all, Rock Ridge took, they swept the entire board for individuals going to state. So that's a, that's a pretty big accomplishment. So I just wanted to say congratulations to the Rock Ridge ladies and the Wolverines.
The Wolverines, yeah. Okay, thank you. So I just, I have a couple of things that I'd like to do. I want to, thanks the council for, you know, we're in a tough situation with the budget. And the people that came here today was invited by an individual citizen who went door to door and brought forth some, disseminated some information that is, in my opinion, is somewhat skewed. But we are working hard with respect to the 2026 budget. We'll continue to do that. And as Council Freedle indicated, we live and work here too. We care about what happens to this community. And our goal and objective and our job here as elected officials is to do two things. To protect the health and safety of our community and try to make decisions that makes this a better place to live and work. That's our job. That's our goal. That's what we continue to try to do regardless of the challenges that we have. We're going to do the best we can to work with the citizens moving forward. We can't do what other entities do. We can't do what the county does. We can't control what the school just does. We can't control what we do. So when property values significantly rise, it affects the levy. And so we have to make sure that we are cognizant in our ways, we approach things and how we manage our finances. But for decades before, our infrastructure was crumbling. We had to do something. If you just sit there and do nothing, if you don't invest in your community, you die on the vine. And I think with the Laurentian Chambers' efforts with respect to this active living in neighborhoods and all those kind of things, it's so very important that we continue to move forward in every, in every facet of the services that we provide. And I want, my second point is I want to thank Teresa Applewick and her staff in the Laurentian Chamber for a wonderful gala at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. I had the privilege of being able to attend that gala, which I go every year. It was outstanding. It was, and the staff at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center did everything to accommodate it. It was beautifully decorated, professionally decorated. It was elegant. And a phenomenal speaker, a motivational speaker in that regard. I was in a comedy club down in the cities for a while. And so all in all, it was a phenomenal event. And congratulations to Revive Virginia for winning that award and all the others awards that were given to those. I'm sure they were all well-deserved. So once again, thank you, Teresa. Thank you for being here tonight. So anything else to come before the council meeting this evening? Seeing none, we will stand adjourned to our next council meeting, which is Tuesday, October 28th, 2025, at 5:30 PM here in the council chambers. Thank you, everybody. We stand adjourned. Good night.